And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We've got about thirty seconds.
Long time.
Yeah. Not if you're a school person, you've done it every day for a hundred years. I did have an opportunity, Greg, to, I took a phone call from the attorney.
Yep.
So there will be no executive session necessary tonight, but we'll have to move it over till the first, May first, just because we didn't really have the data that we needed that we spoke today. Okay, it looks like that hand is on twelve and six, so I'll open the public hearing for the purposes of changing the LLC change of manager for the restaurant known as Pie Town. I think we have those individuals who represent Pie Town here this evening, and perhaps you could just bring us up to speed as to the modifications you're going to make with who's in charge.
We are changing the name on the liquor license.
Okay.
From the previous owner to one of the new owners, who's myself, Jada McConlogh.
Do you have any of this data already?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Do you need to look at it?
No, I don't need to look at it. Have they completed the forms and everything?
Everything is ready to go.
Ready to go.
Just have to sign when you're approved of it.
Okay, so you have no other questions based upon their paperwork? Okay, do you have any questions of us?
No.
Okay, I would, I would say then that we're ready to take a motion to, as requested, to change, change the manager of the Pie Town LLC.
I would move to change the manager of the Pie Town LLC and the holder of the liquor license to Jada McConlogh.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded for, to move forward on the changes requested by the owners who are here this evening. Having said that, any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's a bet, it's a vote. Congratulations. Do you need my signature or our signature?
There's nothing wrong with new lively blood. New lively enthusiastic blood.
And talented, I understand. That's what I hear.
You didn't, you didn't know when you came here you were going to get such accolades.
Well deserved though, really. I don't know if there's other paperwork, but certainly we will follow up on anything you need.
Thank you.
The liquor license is something that everybody wants to make sure we get moving along on, but I don't think this is a big change, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to be here.
Thanks. We can't, we can't wait, we've been looking forward to it. Okay, moving along. We have on our Monday, April tenth, open session meeting minutes.
I would move the approval of the April tenth, open session meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the open meeting minutes for April ten. Further discussion, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have before us also April tenth, executive session, not for release at this time, meeting minutes. Could I have a motion on the April tenth, Board of Selectmen, executive session minutes, please?
I would move to approve but not release at this time, the executive session minutes from April tenth.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session meeting minutes from April tenth, but not for release. Further questions, concerns, modifications, hearing?
When you're dealt with this section, I'd like to.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Yeah, I don't want to.
We're going to be, we're going to be ready to look at public comment, so you're going to be right on.
Right, but I just was looking at the clock and it says six o'clock, and that's, and I was here before six o'clock, yet the meeting began before that.
Well, if you look at that clock behind you, which is the one I'm looking at.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, no, you're, I mean, if I look at my Apple Watch.
Because I saw you walk in, and I was right behind you, and all of a sudden, I missed what else was.
Well, no, all you missed was, you didn't miss anything.
Okay.
That's the only thing you did.
Oh, I missed the.
The pledge.
Oh, you did miss the pledge allegiance.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we need to make sure those clocks are both accurate.
Because this is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
But anyway, moving along. Do we have a, we have a vote on that, please?
Oh, for the executive session minute?
Executive session but not for release. Aye. Okay, that's made and seconded and voted, so that will not be for release. We have now the opportunity for public comment. Since you said, we have some, a member of the public here?
Yes.
I hope that whole thing isn't for us tonight, but anyway.
Oh, no, listen, I just have some notes. At my, at my last meeting, at the last meeting here, we had some discussion. I brought it up, and it seemed to have been, I guess the term now is, the can got kicked down the road, from what I understand, is there was a discussion, and I started with the selectman, John Dixon, and we talked about somehow amassing on a regular basis some funds to put the town of Barry in a better position, so that when it comes to bringing in a new town administrator, and I'm pleased to see you here today.
I'm here.
I thought you were on holiday or something.
He was. Holiday has ended.
Okay.
A short one.
Good for us.
Yeah.
And so that every year we've been, every other year I've been here, we get a new town administrator, they try their best, they have a half year or so of learning, and the next year they get some work done, and all of a sudden they leave, and we're in the same position, and we are a twelve, thirteen, fourteen million dollar corporation. We cannot be regularly hoping to find a credible and enthusiastic and experienced town manager, but that happens to be interim. We have to stop this aggravation on an annual, every other year basis, was it by, by annual?
Well, no, actually Jessica was here for three years, but.
Well, we have to stop this process that we're doing, because we, the town of Barry, is the one that's getting hurt.
I don't think anybody in this room disagrees with you.
Great.
As far as, we, we are very concerned about being able to hire highly qualified people and keep them in our employ.
However, every year we get into the same jam, we can't get over that hum, so I'm asking again to have some discussion. By the way, I have other things to talk about, but I think this is critical. You know, you have to, just like you have to pick your fights, you also have to pick your directions of growth. And this is critical. I think we need some discussions made. We have to figure out how to do this on a regular, and I look forward to the interim town administrator to come forward and maybe come up with some ideas and thoughts, so that we can go forward with this. We can't, we don't want to kick it down the road again.
Well, well.
Because this is happening all, this is the, wait, I'm speaking, excuse me, thank you for your courtesy. This is the third meeting I brought it to. John Dixon made a motion, and all of a sudden it got lost. I think they call it lost in committee.
Well, I would say.
We can't afford to do this anymore.
I would say to you, if you look.
We want some changes.
If you look at our agenda tonight.
Yes.
On, under new business, five, letter C, consultant and possible bylaw for the new town administrator position. We are not kicking it down the road. We understand that, and I even agree with you, Sam, that makes me nervous, Sam.
By the way, and I'm looking at you, and I'm looking at you only because I'm really behind you. I could look at John too, or I could look at Sandy, I just, it just happens to, so don't take it personally.
I don't take it personally, Sam. I just would say to you that I agree, and I don't think I speak, you know, alone. I think there are many individuals in the community that feel similarly, that we have a business that we're trying to run, and I would tell you that I think, you know, we're working hard to negotiate salaries with police, no, same thing with salaries with DPW, and trying desperately to look at, how do we get the best possible town administrator in our employment, and how do we keep them?
And for the longest period of time.
Well, and, and how do we keep them? And you know how we keep them. We keep them by providing them an environment, okay, where there is a hierarchy, where there are bylaws that tell this person who might be the town administrator what their powers and responsibilities are, but not giving them a bunch of responsibilities with not the authority to do the job. That's been a problem, as much as money, trust, trust me.
By the way, I'm glad we're talking about this, and my purpose is to get the conversation going.
Well, the conversation has been going.
I did what I needed to do, I'm going to sit back.
Okay, go sit back, okay, I knew I could. Talk louder or more than you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, moving.
We will have some more comments on that when we get to that item.
Thank you.
Town administrator report, I don't know, Greg, if you have anything you'd like to update us on.
No, just, thank you, Madam Chair, been working, as you know, on the town meeting, special town meeting, which is coming up tomorrow, and putting together the article motions, which would need to be written out for town meeting, and then also attending the, the finance committee to update them on what actions the Board of Selectmen recommend this evening relative to the special town meeting, and also working on the warrant as articles come in for the annual town meeting, which I understand is six weeks from now, which would be June thirteenth.
Right.
So those are the two items, and have other items, things to chime in on, under your new business, special town meeting, and consultant and possible bylaw, and additionally, Senator Goby potential projects for the town, so I'll speak to those as they come up on the agenda.
Anyone have questions for Greg? Okay, we'll just move along then. Selectmen reports, anything specific from anyone?
I have a couple of items, went to a DPW, New England DPWA convention, and was able to meet with some vendors. One that I thought was particularly interesting, a company that has actually had contracts with us for crack sealing and other road preservation items, they'd be interested in presenting to us other ways to better preserve our roads, so that we're keeping them in better shape instead of just waiting for them to go bad and then spending more to fix them later. Also talking about pavement management strategies. So they've offered to come and, you know, provide that whether it's here or at a DPW commission meeting. I think that would be something that would be good to set up, so I can get that information to Greg, and we can put something together on that, if there's interest from the board.
It sounds great, I, I, I think that the most, you know, reasonable place would be at the DPW meeting.
Yeah.
You know, we might be able to highlight it and ask them to meet with us here for that one time, just because we would be on, and public would have an opportunity to hear more specifically than just reading an agenda.
We might be able to combine it as well, I know, we discussed before, potentially setting up a meeting with CMRPC to better understand starting a tip project as well.
Right.
So we may be able to have that as well.
Okay.
Perhaps do something here, and at least see if our DPW director could join us for that.
Okay.
Where it is a bit more highway specific than all of the DPW.
What we, what we probably can do is give him an idea about what dates he's available. I know that this is spring season for him, and I know from a family perspective, he has a baseball player.
Oh, he has.
A little leaguer, and he, I think he's the coach, so I think he's, you know, at certain nights of the week are harder for him, so I think if we could accommodate him a little bit, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else, John?
That's all I have.
Mark?
I've got a question on the, just the meeting times, you know, when we start, is it, is it going to be like six o'clock, or, or, what do we, what do we, is there a set schedule on it, or has there been in the past?
Well, generally, we haven't had a set schedule this month because of the situation with when the election was. And so we're on an odd time. We're, we usually are the first and third Monday.
Yeah.
Of every month, with the exception of when there's a Monday holiday, then we move to the Tuesday.
Yeah, and where are the days?
And what we, we had talked about coming in a little earlier in our meetings to begin them at six rather than at six thirty.
So my, my thoughts on that personally, I know at one point, earlier times we even discussed, I don't know that an open session, you know, other than obviously last time we met, we had DPW commission after, there was, you know.
Reason.
A specific reason for that, before six for open session, I don't think would necessarily be appropriate with just the, the audience that we potentially have with members of the community. However, I know that I am available earlier if we did want to do executive sessions before open meeting sessions going forward. We could plan either a half hour or an hour before that time. I think it would be appropriate to list that separately on the website, to make it clear that open session is until six, but, you know, I know with, you know, respect to everyone here who's, you know, working and needs to get home after, I'd be available if you also would be, you know, to do executive sessions beforehand, and if we don't finish our business during that time, resume that after the open session. So I think that's something we could consider as well.
I think that we can consider that, the only thing is, most of our executive sessions revolve around an attorney.
Yeah.
And if they're going to start with us, they're going to want to finish with us before they break and say, well, we'll come back at the end of your meeting. But I agree with you that when we had our interviews, for example, we met at five or five thirty, just because we had that, and then we had a business meeting, but basically the meetings would start at six.
With respect to the people, the other people that have to be here for, you know, a long time, you know, throughout the day and whatnot, I mean, is there any adjustments that could be made, that we have to have a meeting at six o'clock every single meeting, or is it something we could adjust as, as the agenda presents itself?
Well, you can post, you can, you can certainly post the meetings within forty-eight hours, and have a specific time, and, you know, and obviously the agenda had to be posted as well. The thing that I think is important is to, the more, when we do have to do something at five o'clock, if it was the executive session, that would make sense. If we have, you know, CMRP coming in, a presentation, sometimes that could be a little earlier depending on their schedules. But mostly, mostly when we do the basic business meeting, it's always been pretty much locked in to a particular time. I mean, that doesn't make it right, it just means that's the way.
It gives some consistency for the public who's viewing now, who's watching it at home, and, you know, to some extent, we want to, you know, keep that in mind, that a lot of people who may be watching it, a lot of people in town, at least a decent percentage are commuting from somewhere.
They can watch at any time, though, correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, I would, I'm just asking.
But if someone does have reason to come here.
If we have, if we have, or is it possible to change or adjust the agenda and do like, well, like, the, the items where, you know, license and whatnot, and, what, bunch them all together, like.
Well, what we try to, what we try, what we try to do when we have this kind of an agenda, and we have some, some things like we're a public hearing or some other situ, we'll move them, if people come to that, we move it on the agenda up so that they can.
Up front.
Yeah, we don't have them sit here for hours.
I'm just asking consideration the people that have to be here all day in order to shorten it up, you know, could we have, could we start our meetings at five thirty if we know we're not going to get a big crowd, and, or, or if we are going to get a big crowd, you know, you go.
The challenge is, we don't know if we're going to get a big crowd or not. It's open to the public.
Well, I mean, you have, you do have some, you know, you think you, there's, there are some things that, you know, throw the light on.
But you'd be surprised who shows up for, you know, public comment for things that aren't even remotely on the agenda.
Would you have objections to start the meetings at five thirty if they?
I, I would not be in favor of starting before six for the open session.
I'm open to any old thing. I mean, I, I have, I've spent my life at meetings, so.
Well, I mean, I.
Just one more.
I'm around, I mean, around all day, that's, that's why I'm.
And, and, and most meetings we do have, and in most meetings we do have executive session.
Yeah.
Especially when there's negotiations going on with unions.
And I, and I.
And I don't think there's any problem doing those before.
I agree.
Instead of, and, and those are what can really take time at the end.
Yeah. And I, and I know I can set those up with the attorney with no difficulty, and we could start, for example.
We could start those at five.
You'd have to start them at five, because there's going to be at least an hour.
Have an hour for.
For the executive session. And then that really makes the meeting much more amenable for those people who are traveling, and for the attorneys that were paying.
I think it's a win-win for people who would want to join for the open session, and also allows us to not be here till eight o'clock at night.
Well, that's my point.
So then, so then we would post supper?
I think that would be.
Executive session at five.
I think that would be the best way to do it, so that people understand that, you know, this first hour is executive. And certainly people are welcome to show up for those first two minutes, for the, the small bit of open session before we go into executive session if they want to, but there's really no point to that. But, you know, that is technically open session for about a minute and a half while we go into executive session. But I think that would be an appropriate way to accommodate both.
Agreed.
Parties involved, so to speak.
Yeah.
Sam?
I wasn't thinking about this at this time, but regularly, this is such a small town, we have a finite amount of people who can come, who want to come and to participate in planning or other committees, ZBA or whatever it is, sometimes when the meetings are scheduled, they're all scheduled on one day at the same time, and I find myself often, but of course, I come to the meeting, a lot of people don't come. Probably have sat in this seat for years, they should have it engraved or something. But I know that I come to this meeting, or I come to the, the finance committee meeting, and I say, how am I going to be at finance and planning at the same time? There must be some sort of a method that we can look ahead and say, let's give, let's spread it out. Why do we, I mean, I know that we have the meeting planning on one day, every day for years, and same time, same place, and so, I know that, and the selectmen are the same, but there's nothing wrong with changing so that some of these folks who want to participate other than myself can, can go to the meetings instead of being torn, because we have, we do not have an infinite people who have interests, that's all.
Well, I, we certainly can look at, and I think that's something for the new town administrator to really grapple with, because I think that will be new ideas and new opportunities at that time. So I think, I hear you, and there's not a lot of things, you know, that we're.
Yeah, I believe for the most part, at this point, each board operates on their own determining when they're going to meet.
Yes.
So it's more of a matter of them determining what works best for their members, and, you know, there certainly should be thought given to what works best for the public.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that there's an appropriate way for us to force that, though.
Communicate.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think that certainly it's, it's a good point, point to consider, and as you said, some of these boards have met on that night at that time for a hundred years. And I think people just get elected and say, well, when's the meetings, and no one really changes it.
One other thing to think about, executive session sometimes goes over an hour. So if we're posting at six, we're still in executive session, how does that work?
We would have to exit executive session, go into open, and then resume executive session at the end.
But I, but I would say.
I, I would hope that we can get to a point where we're not meeting for over an hour for executive session anymore.
Executive session.
But, you know, obviously there are situations that come up where we wouldn't.
Listen, it's going to save us money for us to be succinct and spend very good quality time in executive session, because we're not in executive session most of the time. There's an attorney sitting there, and the clock is turning. So I think it's a, it's a good challenge for us, and most of the time, we get off on tangents, and sometimes, you know, when we're talking about a particular item in collective bargaining that we could really zoom in on.
Yeah.
But, so hopeful that we'll be able to.
Not to keep the tape rolling on this, but is there, is there ever reasons to possibly throw another day of the month in to get, you know what I mean, other than that they're, you know, the.
Oh, we do.
We do.
We didn't tell you that.
Well, good.
Absolutely happens.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, because there are many times, for example, that we end up meeting, you know, three, three Mondays sometimes, or sometimes an extra Tuesday, depending, you know, because like this week, you've got this, and then you've got the special town meeting, and then next Monday you've got DPW, and if, based upon what's happening in collective bargaining, I could see we're definitely going to have to do some more work on that if we want to settle these contracts before the end of these fiscal year.
We'll do what we need to, and to get.
I'm just trying to say, I'm just, you know, trying to be, consider it to everyone, that's all.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, we didn't tell you that yet.
That's, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Okay, so I think we are moving, moving on, and any other select board?
I have nothing else for your select board reports.
Okay, anything from you?
Go right now.
Okay, good. Okay, I don't have anything other to, than to thank each and every one of you for your efforts to make sort of a crazy time be sane. I know that I've seen all of you in passing, meeting with Greg and having conversations with Sandy to try to make sure we pick up what loose ends we can, because being, you know, you know, being, having, having Greg, who's fortunately very experienced, has been really a help. Thank you for being here, and it's going to be, you know, a good experience for all of us. He's reaching out to the other boards and trying to figure out what their needs are so that we can keep on top of everything as we move to town meeting in June. So my thanks for that. I don't think we have any specific correspondence, do we?
We don't have any.
Okay, we've had a pretty quiet week in that regard. School vacation is always a quiet week. We have our public hearing, and our new business taken care of, we have special town meeting review, actions and recommendations, and you have that before you, which is called special town meeting warrant. Greg, did you want to walk us through that?
Sure. If everyone can, can find the, the warrant, we have a total of four articles. The first article is seeking funding for the town's 250th anniversary celebration. The amount that was put forward by the committee was $100,000, but I've also been informed that this amount is to be offset by any state or private funds that are to be raised. So the article, the way it is, is there'll be a motion for the full amount of money, but there'll be a caveat in there that says any state or private funds will be used before town funds are used.
If you would put charitable foundation funds.
Yes.
Rather than just private funds, because.
Shall do.
Because we, we, we know that there's going to be some donations significant at the state level as well, and so that will offset, I think, some of that money for us, and still give the 250th anniversary what they need.
Okay. So the source of funding would be from free cash?
Other, yes.
For the particular item, and it's a majority vote that's required to approve. Any questions on Article One?
Do we have the amount of free cash available right now? Do you have that offhand?
Five hundred and something like that, it's five forty-five?
Yeah, it's, it's over half a million dollars, I have the number on my hand, and I can get it to you. Obviously, we'll need to have that for tomorrow night's meeting, and we will.
We don't know how much will be available from other sources.
Well, we kind of do. Fifty, fifty thousand. We believe that we have a charitable foundation potential gift of 25,000, and sort of a, a thing that comes down through legislation usually for towns that are, you know, having their 250th or 200, there's usually an amount of money that's set aside. That's tradition and has been available, so we're assuming it'll be also available for us. Now, what we'll do is, a hundred thousand will be there, but offset by those other things should they come through. The community group was concerned that if we just put 50,000 in there, and it didn't come through, you know, they'd be short for money. So this way, working with the charitable foundation, working with the Senate and the, and the House in, in Boston, I think we're going to be good.
So the 100,000 is essentially a worst-case scenario.
Yes, it is.
Yes. I don't think we should put it quite that way, but yes.
But worst cases, and there's no additional funding that's coming in.
Yes, yeah. And that, that's, that's great to have that additional funding, and it helps the town with its free cash to stabilize that, so that's a good thing. Going on to the Article Two.
Article Two is requesting funding for Mass Munifin Consulting Services, which provided services to the treasurer collector's office during this fiscal year. So the amount that's needed is a total of 39,611.26. Mass Munifin for the public was a consultant that was hired to assist the transition in the treasurer collector's office from the former treasurer to the present treasurer. They provided services until November of 2022, but they also had worked in the previous[1738.06] They provided services until November of 2022, but they also had worked in the previous fiscal year, too. That amount has been paid in its entirety, leaving us the remaining salary that, excuse me, the remaining cost that we have. Of that 39,611.26, there is a, a small portion that's due to the, due to the treasurer, Mr. Volker, because his salary is slightly higher than what was budgeted, and that amount through the end of the fiscal year is included within the total that I just stated.
And that will be from free cash?
Free cash, majority vote is required.
Okay.
Article Three. Article Three is a request to purchase and equip a new ambulance for the fire department. Fire department is the sponsor. So, these articles were voted in the June 2022 annual town meeting. Over, Town Council had informed the board that the articles needed to be revoted, because there was specific language for the town entering into a lease purchase arrangement. That's the reference to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), which allows a lease purchase up to five years. Again, they have specific language in there, which was not included in the original article. So the article did pass a year ago, and no actions have been taken pursuant to that, so we've not moved forward that. The town would be looking to enter into a five-year lease purchase. That lease purchase would be subject to a debt exclusion. Debt exclusion is Prop. 2.5, item used for debt, and this, even though it's a lease purchase, is recognized by the Commonwealth Department of Revenue as being a capital expense, and therefore eligible for a debt exclusion under 21(c) of Chapter 59. And that language is here. That language was not originally included in the, in the article when it was presented to town meeting a year ago.
And these have been, these are now the recommendation of the finance committee as well?
Yes, and it is necessary, because what, what happens is, the town does not do it in the form of a debt exclusion, or you'll be scrambling for the next five years to figure out how you're going to pay for the thing.
Well, especially when you see what the next article is.
Yes. I would also mention that any action taken on a ballot question would have to be done no later than September 15th of 2023. So the state says that when you vote one of debt exclusion, contingent debt exclusion, you have to complete the ballot portion of it no later than September 15th. So just kind of keep that in mind, it's about 90 days, almost to the day, from the date that it would be voted.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So this is separate from the debt exclusion that was already on the ballot?
That's, that's correct.
There are, we, we are carrying, now, the debt exclusion for the Ruggles Lane roof and window project, there's a debt exclusion for the town commons.
Yep.
The debt exclusion that was just voted is a very minimal thing, it's going to be off the tax rate in, I guess, three years. And these obviously would be, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how the lease purchase on the fire will go, can't be just five years.
We'll do whatever the statute provides, the maximum term.
Yeah.
And it'll be back before you for your approval. I want to mention the word-
Did the finance committee provide an estimate of the increase it would be?
I don't have that at this time, but I'm sure that's a question that will come up.
The increase of what?
For the tax rate.
Oh, no, they haven't done that. And I would just say that the, from the next article, which is the fire, this, this was not recommended by the finance committee at town meeting, it was now recommended by them with this new language.
So, yes, that would bring us to Article Four. Similar language, it was presented to the June 14th, 2022 annual town meeting. The language for, again, for the debt exclusion was not there, and also the language concerning lease purchase, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), was also missing.
And this is a lease purchase as well, correct?
It is, and, and, and in response to the previous question, the statute provides up to five years for lease purchase, so that's the maximum term that we could go for. We might want to say that we want to spread that cost out over 10 or 20 years-
Yeah.
-but the statute only provides up to five years.
If we do a lease purchase.
Correct, correct, and that's what we really should do. We spoke earlier today with Jessica Sizer-
Right.
-who, who really was a great assistance, giving us an understanding of how, what the thought process was to putting these articles forward, and it really, especially this one, with the amount, this $700,000 to purchasing and equip a new fire truck, the town needs to decide whether it wants to do it above and, above the Prop. 2.5 limit. So that language is also here, and again, it will be subject to a debt exclusion question no later than 9/15/23. If it passes town meeting and it fails at the ballot, the article ceases to exist. So there is no further action of the board of selectmen or town meeting that is required, because it's voted with the language saying contingent or subject to.
Would you expect that we would do sort of a Chinese menu debt exclusion, where they could vote for the ambulance, but not for the fire truck, or they could, because I would suspect we'll get ambulance votes quicker than we'll get fire truck votes. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I, I think-
Were you required two-thirds, by the way?
At the town meeting?
You're required to have two-thirds, oh, yes.
But at the ballot, just a majority.
That, that was a good question. It is, is it a two-thirds vote at town meeting? Yes.
So just to be clear to, to everyone, these are two separate debt exclusion items from what was voted on before. What was voted on before will go to town meeting, I assume, at the annual town meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it will.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we need approval of this warrant as presented?
You've already approved it, and you've already signed it. So this was just merely for the board's informational purposes, and to give the public an understanding of some of the background behind the articles, there's no further action of the board that's required.
Okay. And we could have some indication of impact on tax rate potentially for tomorrow night, but that would... Okay. Okay, moving along to Senator Goby's potential projects for the town. In other words, Senator Goby has some earmarking that I guess is available to Senate people, and indicates, you know, what potential projects do you have in your town that, you know, would be great for them to subsidize from the state? I'm guessing, and it says, anything over, what was it, $100,000 needs, like, all kinds of special, you know? In other words, he's talking about, I would say, they're not saying, oh, yeah, they're going to buy the fire truck, okay, that's not happening.
Right. What I did do is, I dusted off the capital plan that Jessica had prepared for the fiscal years 2021 through 2025, and as you mentioned, a lot of these things are, are big-ticket items. However, I, I put in here things like, replace the town hall heating system. For some reason, that wasn't included in the capital plan, and the short time that I've been here, I've been told, and I've lived the fact, that it's either brought too much heat on one side of the building, or not enough heat on the other.
Seen Henry Woods Building?
Yes.
Oh, HDA, seen Henry Woods.
And people are constantly having to babysit that thing, so I think between a combination of funding from Senator Goby's office, if she can pull it off, but there's also programs available through Mass Save and through National Grid that we may be able to avail ourselves to, I would think that that would be important. And then, it's just a, a listing of other projects that had been put together, which are representative, I think, of pretty much all of our departments, including the water and sewer department. There's one other item that didn't meet the definition of capital, but it's something that was brought to my attention, and it's updating of the town code. So the town has a, a, an online and a hard copy of the town code, which is a codification of all the town's bylaws, rules, and town meeting votes. And that document needs to be updated regularly, the town clerk is in charge of doing so. She gave me a quote not too long ago, the cost was just a little bit under $10,000 to do that. It was originally put together back in 2002, so 21 years ago, and it was last updated in 2021.
You're talking about the clock and the-
Yeah, the document, that, that document.
Well, I, I know that the town clock is now being refurbished based upon a charitable foundation donation for, for about $25,000, and the only thing that the town is going to be responsible for, I find out, is that where the flagpole is, coming up through the cupola, I didn't know this, but you have to have it so it, so there's like a joint in there, like, because the flagpole waves.
Yeah.
So, that joint, that joint, which I think was probably some sort of a cushiony kind of rubber thing, is gone, and it's leaking into the cupola. It has been for, I just, you know, and, and so, anyway, they've discovered as they're replacing all this electronics, okay, that's leaking. So, I have been working with the historical commission, because they're the ones who are actually fixing the clock, so they have called in the roofer who worked on our roof, but they didn't do the cupola, that wasn't their thing. But it looks like a small fix, and what they're trying to do now is to coordinate the lift when it comes, so when the lift goes up to do the final things on the clock, they can take the people up to do whatever the repairs are. So I know that they have a local roofer, as well as Kid Lugo Roofing Company, that's done the roofwork there last year. So I think it's in good hands with the historical commission. I think the town may end up paying a portion of the lift. It costs 4,000 for the lift, so I think the town may end up paying 2,000. But it, it, it needs to be fixed, so they are addressing it, the historical society, that is their project, and they are paying freight for the most of it. One thing I would just say, if you go on to page three, which it says, replace air handle units at Woods Memorial Library, that's an error. It's not $2,000, it's 20,000. I wish it was two, but it's 20. See, I would suspect the Ann Goby thing, they want to show up with a check and say, we did X.
Well, that would be a nice one to show up with a check for.
Yeah.
And also-
We got to figure that, that, I mean, even purchasing a new, a generator for council on aging, I mean, you know, I don't know what the level of need is there for that, but, you know, if they wanted for a warming center or whatever. One thing that, that I know that has been on our plate before is a generator for Ruggles Lane, that elementary school, which is immediately adjacent to the housing for the elderly down on, what's, what's that street, Bentley Lane? I don't know which street it really is, is it Ruggles Lane or Bentley Lane?
Bentley Lane is down on-
Yeah, but that's where the housing for the elderly is.
Yes, that's correct.
But anyway, so there's been a, a move afoot to say, we should have the place for warming and so forth at the elementary school, which is immediately adjacent to, okay-
Which would help them as well.
Yes, because right now, the place that they can go to is the high school.
Yep.
And I guess they don't like to go there.
It may be hard to get there for them.
Huh?
They, they may have-
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, so, anyway, so, you know, I-
There's no generator?
No.
So the, so Madam Chair, the, the amount, if I kind of look at, I didn't give you the whole spreadsheet, the amount that was budgeted for the new generator for the council on aging was 75,000.
Okay, so that's the council on aging, but that would be the, for the building that's down on Valley Road. If we, if you do the, a generator at the elementary school, you know, obviously, if, the generator would not help when the kids are in there, because they would be dismissed.
Yeah.
But it would be primarily for the, you know, a, a place, a warming place, and a place for the people who live in, what's the name of that? It's an actual name of the elderly housing. What's the name of the housing for the elderly, is, is the name?
Grandview?
Grandview. Grandview. So that's-
I have a question on that. I have a question on the generator, on this 75,000. What is, how did they come to that? Have they already sized it for the-
I'm, I'm guessing somebody did size that, because this is a list that we've gotten from other people.
Okay, I'm just curious.
But there's no question that I would suspect we, we would have to-
Prices may have changed since last review.
Yeah, since they last did this.
Right.
So, so I, I mean, I think-
So we could assume it might be closer to 100,000.
Yeah, I know, I think so, too. But even if we were able to get, you know, 50% of it, or 75,000 of it, and the town were to, to do the rest, it would be really, really wonderful.
The other thing of interest, I know it mentions on here ADA accessible ramp to town hall, I'm assuming that's not, I, I don't have the price of that on here, but I know we have an entire list of other ADA improvements around town from that report that was provided last year.
And I think, and I think we're eligible now, okay, since we've done the study, I think there's some grants out there to get.
So we should be looking at those as well.
Yeah.
So, my question is, how do we prioritize on all this, on all these different things? You know, what?
Well, I'm just saying, she just asked for a list, and she's not, we're not going to get any, we're just not going to get anything that's cost a couple hundred thousand.
Right.
You know, that's not going to happen.
Anything.
So, it's sort of a, a thing that, for example, I think they gave us $75,000 for the elderly, the senior center roof, and they came with a check and the whole thing. It's that kind of stuff that we're going to get the opportunity for. I would suspect that Greg or I could call her office, talk with her primary aide, and say, okay, here's what we really think would be the best thing for our community. One thing that we know our community has been begging for is a, is another, is a, is a playground for kids, and we had hoped to do some of that out of ARPA. We're still waiting. I know for our attorney on, you know, the-
The cable.
The cable expansion, which is just about at my wit's end about that, but hopefully we'll have some idea about that. Playground money could obviously come from ARPA as well, but, I, I mean, so if, if, if we would like to, you know, pick one or two of these and say, these are our highest priority, we could definitely do that, and send them down to her, her, her office. Now, this does not mean we're getting this, it just means that we may get a nod on something.
I can reach out to the senator's office tomorrow.
Okay.
The, the aide that gave me the card, and, and kind of run some of these different ones by them, and find out which ones have the greatest appeal.
A chance, right, right.
So you said they'll want to come out?
Yeah.
I, I certainly don't think there'd be, there's anything bad on this list, so to speak. Anything that they'd be willing to give us some funding for, I think, would be helpful for the town.
Agreed.
You know, obviously, you know, from our discussion, I think our preference is more towards generators and ADA, things that are, you know, beneficial to the entire community for accessibility and safety issues.
Okay.
But again, they'll, you know, giving them the options to fund what they're, you know, willing to.
And if there's, and if there's something they want more information about, please, you know, contact us or whatever, so we can make sure that they get whatever they need. I know that they're going, going to go into budget debates probably by the week of the 8th of May, so my guess is they're looking for the earmarks.
Pretty timely to get it in.
Pretty timely to get it in, yeah. We'll see what happens in the House budget. I, I know that Mass Municipal has been working hard to try to get a increase in unrestricted local aid. I don't know if they're going to give-
Fingers crossed.
Fingers, but I'm not, I'm not taking that to the bank. So, wait and see, I guess. Town hall issues, these are things that, John, you've talked with, with previous-
Before we, sorry, we, we skipped over C. I know we discussed it a little bit during-
Oh, I'm so sorry, you're right, we did. I don't want to skip over C.
How could you forget that?
I don't know.
I would, I wouldn't let you leave, we're discussing.
Okay, you want to walk us through your recommendation, Greg?
So, Madam Chair, board members, I guess the first thing is to discuss whether the board wishes to hire a consultant to kind of spearhead the search process. It's fairly common now that municipalities in a similar situation to Barry, where you're between town administrators, will hire a consultant who's an expert in municipal recruitment. There's a few, just a handful of firms that are out there that do this type of work. I've experienced with two of them, in Blackstone and in Webster, they were both excellent. Those are larger communities. The, the fee would be, for a town this size, would be under $10,000. The reason why I say that is, I gave you a copy of an RFP, and if it's under $10,000, you don't need to go through the RFP process, you go through what's called Sound Business Practices.
Right, three, three quotes?
Yeah, and, and I think that's, I really think that if you decide to go in that direction, that's, that's advisable, because it will save you many weeks-
Oh, yeah.
-versus advertising, getting formal proposals, having to decide, review those, and, and weigh whether they meet the criteria, that, that, that's at least a month to go through that process. So, so that's kind of the, the first thing that you should consider, and my recommendation is that you do go ahead and, and bring in an, an expert. And you said I've had good experiences with two of them. There's other firms out there that I don't have experiences with, but I've heard good things of them, and I think it would be wise to kind of touch base with them. I think, from a calendar standpoint, they could probably prepare something pretty quick, not necessarily for Monday night, a week from tonight, but certainly by the end of that week, toward the 8th, if, you know, you want to look at it, we could have documents before you. The only other real key, critical question that kind of drives the consultant is whether you're going to have a search committee or not. And I know different towns have different opinions, and I'm sure you, board members have different opinions as to whether you want to have a search committee or not. Search committee will take time. It will take about four weeks, I would guess, from start to finish, because the search committee is typically charged with reviewing applications, and then inviting in candidates and conducting a preliminary interview. And realistically, that process from inception to completion is about a month.
Oh, I think you're generous, or to say, a month, I think it's longer than that.
Yeah, it, 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 it can take a while. So, again, when I was in Webster, the, the town bylaw required that they have a search committee, so they had a search committee. And it moved along fairly quickly, but the search committee was already in place before I came there, for whatever reason. It went quickly. Blackstone did not go with a search committee. So in, in the case of Blackstone, they, they used the interim acting town administrator, me, and the consultant to kind of narrow the list from a large number of resumes to a smaller number of resumes. And I was in touch with the board members throughout that process and kept them apprised of, of kind of what was going on. And the reason why it was effective is because the, the people kind of with the most knowledge about what the job entails would be your interim town administrator and your consultant who's doing the recruitment. It's not to minimize the importance of a citizen's search committee. I don't want to do that, I guess I'm sounding like I am, but it, it, you know, you don't, you have to kind of be really sure of what the committee needs to be looking for. So it's not enough to tell the search committee, go out and bring us ten candidates.
Right.
You have to define what qualities you want those ten candidates to possess, what their skill, knowledge and ability is, and then have the search committee base their recommendations on, on what that criteria would be. It's, it's, it's a fairly lengthy process. If you decide to go that route, understand it will take additional time. Blackstone did talk about appointment of a search committee. It was decided that they did not want to do so because they kind of wanted to follow the calendar. The process there, it took, it took a while. The reason why it really took a while is because the, the candidate who they hired had to give a month and a half notice to their employer.
Well, I think, I think that's.
So at the end of the day, you go through this whole thing, you move through it quickly, and the candidate you select has to give notice, in which case it takes longer time. Or in the case of Webster, the candidate was selected on a Monday night and said they were willing to start on a Tuesday.
Well, I think that's unusual.
It was unusual, and that took about, it took about five months from start to end.
Oh, jeez.
Yep, but I think you can get through it there. So, so the question is consultant or, or search committee?
Well, I mean, having, having hired a lot of people in my day, and, you know, when one looks for someone with the leadership and qualities that we would have to have in order to make this position work, I would love to have the opportunity to have a consultant who sits at the table and who goes through information and so forth, and really understands the position and understands the skill set that's necessary and can address questions that really relate to that person's job, or the, the job that we're hiring someone for. And so I, I would, I would never go out and hire a very important position like a superintendent of schools, an assistant superintendent, or principal of a big operation without having, you know, a consultant who has the expertise to know the field. And they know people who they can say, yeah, this might be a place you want to apply, that wouldn't necessarily be looking. So I think they're, they're useful in that regard as well.
I think, I, I think recruitment and recruiters essentially are, you know, the, the way it works now in most industries, including this one. Certainly, that's, you know, commonplace, you know. I don't know that the way it's been done in the past has been effective in keeping someone around a long time. And obviously, there's other issues involved in that, as you said, financial and duties and responsibilities, but I'm certainly open to, to taking a new path and trying a new way to, to have a long-term fix to this. So I, I'd be in favor of hiring a recruiter, or what was the term?
Yeah, recruit, recruiting firm is a good, good word for it.
Mark?
Yeah.
Well, I don't, as in, you know, finance, we're, you know, we're facing problems here. Money is always a big thing, you know, people don't like the upfront cost of that, okay, but one brought up to me earlier, Sandy actually brought up to me, saying that in the long run, that the consultant fee is not that much money.
No.
And especially in terms of the cost of the changeover, you know, turnover, yeah.
So.
Well, I, I guess I would look for a motion to pursue the consultant to begin the search process for the position of, are we gonna call this a town manager, a town administrator? What is the appropriate title in this world?
So, yeah, so generally, I, I would suggest a town administrator because you probably want to be able to walk before you can run. And typically, your, your town managers have authority vested in them by charter. And we do not have a municipal charter.
So I would move to, I guess, begin the process of securing the services of a recruitment service for a town, for the town administrator position.
Okay, second?
Second.
We have a motion meeting, seconded to seek the assistance of a recruitment officer or company to help us in our search for a town administrator, new town administrator. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, we're good for that.
Excellent.
And now, when can you, so you could probably by Monday, by May first, say to us, hey, I think we are, we've got a couple people interested.
So, so what I'll do is, after town meeting, I'll spend some time reaching out to these firms. I'll reach out to at least three firms.
Okay.
Then ask them, tell them kind of what we're looking for, and ask them to submit a letter that outlines what they perceive as the scope of services and what their timeframe and what their fee would be. And then I'll get that to you, and you can discuss it in an open meeting.
Sounds good.
The, the other thing I put in the packet, board members, was the, the bylaw. Because I think it's one of the things that's kind of missing here. And I think if you really want to bring in someone who's got some pedigree, you, you want to look at a bylaw. And bylaws needed for a lot of reasons, it's needed to, so that the person who's hired knows what he or she exactly has to do. But I think in, in our case, it's needed so that people who work within this organization understand what the chain of command and the lines of accountability are, and that's what this is intended to do.
I think accountability in the, in the chain of command and having people have clear knowledge of that is absolutely essential. And I think that's some of the things that I know that John has brought up before, about some of that, that's not necessarily readily available. One thing that I would wonder, if you can take from your advice on this, should we be establishing a bylaw and moving it to town meeting for June?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's important to establish your town administrator as the chief administrative officer of the town. I think that's implied here, but I'm never really sure. And, and then it goes into great detail in, in terms of what the powers and the duties of the position would be. And, and this is just an example. This is an example of, of a town that's kind of similar, was in a similar situation where you were, say, ten years ago. And they, they went forward with a bylaw, someone may say, why didn't you go forward with a charter? A charter is a much more extensive document. A charter would establish your town manager as your chief executive officer.
Right.
And I think in, in this community, that's probably not appropriate, that the, the system is, the board of selectmen is the chief executive, and you want to maintain that authority as the chief executive who is responsible for hiring decisions and, and major decisions involving policy of the town, so. And this kind of parallels what my vision is, and I think it, it would work out pretty well. The one unique thing that we have here is we have a DPW committee. And so there needs to be some language in, in here, how, how those two would kind of fit together.
And I think that that, that has been, I think, a conundrum for us. Trying to, and I don't mean just for us, I mean, I just mean the way in which it's structured because it seems like everybody's in charge of everything and yet no one's in charge of anything. I mean, I, I, I say to the commission, gee, what response, what, what cooperation can I expect as representing the commission? And as I negotiate with the sewer personnel, the, the water department, they go, oh, no, you just do it. And I go, what? And so, but then you come back and you say, well, here's what I've done, do, do they have a right of approval or not? They say, no. So I, I, I find it very hard to work with that because, at least when you work with fifteen different school committee members, everybody knows what their job is, what the superintendent's job is. But, so I think that would be great if we could somehow get some language in a bylaw about that.
You also want to, like, the town administrators, your chief procurement officer.
Yep.
They're your ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act coordinator. They're your right-to-know coordinator.
Right.
And there are also something under the law called the municipal hearings officers. So if someone files an appeal under the, the fire code of the law, it, there's a whole section of law that's, and your town administrator is naturally that person who kind of performs that function also. So those things should be enumerated and stated, rather than implied, like, I, I wouldn't want to be here for six months and all of a sudden find out, hey, you're the ADA coordinator, and be like, well, is that someone else's job? But, you know, state it in here.
Yeah.
So the person who comes on board knows exactly what other hats they have to wear.
Okay.
And so that we also know what hats they wear, and the whole town knows what hats they wear.
Who you can hold responsible and who you can ask to help.
Yep.
With your experience, like, we spoke earlier, you basically were behind the times on this.
You got this time?
Yes. We're way behind the times on the way it's structured.
We're, we're behind, and, and I think you will get a better quality candidate with all of your cards on the table face up.
Agreed.
And that's what this document tries to do.
No, I'm, regarding the, the DPW and how that's structured.
Yeah, that's, that's unique.
Yeah.
I, I, I call it unique.
But it's, it was a whole.
It's not behind the times, it's outside of the times.
Yeah, it's a, but it was a whole rule petition, so it's state statute.
Time machine.
That's the, that's the rub.
Right, but you'd have to kind of, some, some would have to put pen, we would have to put pen to paper and kind of come up with a solution and, and keep the DPW commission informed of what's going on. Because the last thing you want to do is go to town meeting and say, well, and be able to, ah, I never saw. And I've seen this effective work lately before, when you think you've got all the Is dotted and Ts crossed, and you go to town meeting and someone jumps up and says, well, I, I never saw this, I wasn't part of this. You're gonna be kind of process oriented when you go forward. And the good news is, we have six weeks.
Yep.
To pull something together, which is, is kind of.
Well, I mean, it's critical to, to have a person know what their job description is and that they have the authority to ha, to handle the responsibility.
Jay, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, I think so.
And, and all I mean of the thing outside of time, it's not that traditionally towns have run this way. It's just that this is something very unique to our community, there are a handful of other communities that have it. But it's just, it's not something that is typical from the past, or, you know, something that's becoming more common either. So it's just a matter of defining and understanding exactly what their roles and responsibilities are, I think. And that's, you know, something we're gonna address in a bit with all boards and committees, not just with DPW commission.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Before we move off of that item, just talking about the retention, the financial aspect of it, I, I know we have some available free cash. I don't know that that necessarily is the best way. I, I think the longer-term solution is to work with the finance committee and establish ways that we could have recurring.
Well, we don't want a structural deficit.
Right.
By taking out free cash.
Exactly. We, we want to be able to ensure that any reoccurring charges, or reoccurring costs of having a long-term town administrator has reoccurring funding to cover that.
Right.
That being said, you know, if, if we are able to save free cash into some sort of stabilization fund or something along those lines, that would be great for the town to be increasing those. I'm not sure offhand if that's going to happen this year. But I think that's something that will be understood better after our town meetings.
Excuse me, but with all of this said, which is wonderful, is that we need to hire, I call, some sort of leader, as we spoke about. When we look for this leader, historically, we have paid the leader little funds. I would hope there might be some method of process to assure that this year, we can come in with a little bit more cash in our pocket to say, we wouldn't normally do this, but in this instance, is, in this time of need, we have allocated from someplace a percentage or an additional amount or something, so we don't lose an opportunity.
I think the, the, the best way to approach that would be, as we go into the annual town meeting, to ask the finance committee to potentially increase the amount that's being budgeted for the administrative position.
That's it, it should be in the budget and note, we should, you know.
And, and your consultant should be able to provide you with what comparables there are for this position, based upon his or her knowledge of what's going on in other communities right now.
And I, and I think that we, we always have to be mindful of creating a structural deficit. And we have to understand, if we want to pay a salary, it has to be in that budget. It has to be part of our.
Has to be recurring.
Yeah, it has to be our operations. And the most important thing is, for example, when you look at, you know, getting a consultant to do this, that you take out of free cash.
Yep.
Because that's a one-time thing, and then it's done. And so, I'm, what, we're gonna get what we pay for. I mean, let's be honest about this, we're not gonna get some.
There was, for example, a signing bonus type thing, I'm not sure if that's common in, in this industry, but, you know, that's something that could come from free, free cash.
What about a sign-on bonus or something that's, by the year, like a three-year deal with a certain amount every year? Of course, putting some sort of timeline on it, so they don't leave us right before a town meeting, so you get the afterwards, you know what I mean? Agreed down type thing?
I would, I would tell you that, when, when Jessica speaks to me about her job, her new job, she didn't leave here for my money. She didn't. She left here because there was nothing like this. There was no hierarchy that she could understand, there was no authority she had. She had tons of responsibilities dumped on the desk and no real authority to manage, manage the process. And the level of frustration was immense, and so it wasn't money. I'm not that I'm saying that, you know, but because she's making no more money now, in fact, maybe a little less. And she's not here. And I think, you know, I, I, I respect very much her efforts to do more with, with, with not the authority and sometimes, you know, trying to smooth around things to get things to work. So I know that our need for that bylaw is, is really important, as well as our need to reach out and get the, the, the skill set we need and hopefully a level of experience that I think we need.
I, I certainly think the, the bylaw aspect is, is the more important aspect to making this, you know, a long-term hire.
Yeah.
Well, labor's a problem anyway, though, everybody's always looking for them. So that's gonna be a problem at any level, like, all the way up to that, so I mean, we got, we have to be competitive.
Yep.
And, you know, what, what's that gonna take?
Well, what it's gonna take is a job that you have, you see, you can't say to a person, there's all this responsibility, but you have no authority vested in, 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 as, as I would say, I had a lot of authority, responsibility as a superintendent, but I had a lot of authority. But when you, when you have all this responsibility and you don't have the, the, you know, the authority to, to, to manage it, you just, I mean, it's a, it's a horrible situation.
It is, but I'm still stuck on the money thing, I know, I know, but it's hard.
And.
Yeah.
The amount of what?
Yeah.
Very good people.
Well.
And it's a world where it really is turning, you know, more issues, work-related issues are coming now from work environment versus financials, but they're both very important aspects to consider and to, you know, provide the appropriate conditions to have a long-term hire.
So hopefully we'll work together, do you make that up?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Right?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some edits and, at your next meeting, I'll, I'll present those edits.
Great.
I think the important thing that's here is the board is the hiring authority, and it needs to be maintained in here that the board is responsible, ultimately makes the final decision in terms of this.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving along to now town hall issues, John, those are pretty much yours.
Yep.
Sorry to tease out what you had talked about.
Yeah, so the first thing is something that has come up before, a directive. Certainly not a bylaw system of any sort, but just a directive system so that the, the resolutions, so to speak, that this board makes are documented and properly distributed to either the boards and committees that they're directed towards or towards the departments that they're directed towards. I have been putting together kind of a founding directive for that system that I'd, I'd like to provide and review coming forward. I don't have that, I was hoping to have that together for today, I don't quite have that ready yet. So I think that's something that's gonna be important to establish what we are, it, it kind of falls to this same hierarchy of, you know, what do we expect for each department? Like, what are the roles and responsibilities of each board and commission? And to have that properly laid out and defined, and, you know, as we, you know, for one of the examples that came up before, a previous select board passed, you know, a resolution saying, you know, no animals should be brought to work in this building. But that's not recorded anywhere, there's no place that that can be referenced from. So this is really to create a system so that directives can be referenced. You know, can be established, can be removed by the select board to better establish what, you know, our expectations are and what processes are preferred to maintain a, a functional and well-running town. It's nothing that would be, you know, directing the people of the town in any way. It's, it's not something that would, you know, have the same authority as a bylaw by any means. This is, would be, you know, substantially lower authority than any sort of bylaws or anything like that. This is just, would just be for the functions of the town. So, just to kind of refresh around what we were kind of looking to do there. It's something I'd been talking about with Jessica before she left, and we're, you know, hoping to have that better situated.
Is this primarily for employees? Is this primarily for employees of the town?
So I.
Is it an employee handbook that we're talking about?
So there's already um like the the um the employee uh. There there's already some systems in place for for um employee expectations and and things like that that are very general. Um, I think this realistically would have two major parts to it. Um, one for any resolutions or directives that we pass for departments that are affecting employees directly. And another section that's really focused more on boards and committees, how we expect them to operate. You know, one of the issues that comes up is the um the video recording. Uh, we haven't established a system to do that with, um, and that's actually something else I want to talk about in a bit. But if we have a proper system set up to say, all right, here is our directive, this is the best way to approach this, this is what we would expect. Um, it's, you know, not exactly something enforceable, but at least we have it written down. This is the way that we expect it to be done. So that there is at least a way for people, for boards and committees to do that. To, you know, I mean, at this point, even if a board and committee wants to, aside from, you know, coming here and getting uh someone to record and put it out live, there's not, you know, a well defined system to do that with. And that's something we've kind of struggled with putting together, because it is, you know, a multifaceted issue with both the equipment side of it and the distribution side of it. So that's something, um, I I was hoping to have a bit more on that uh by today, but I'm I'm next time, by the next time we have it on the agenda, um, I would like to have at least a, you know, an establishing directive for that, for a review for this uh for the select board to review and discuss and potentially go move forward with. Um, so the next item I had on here is the um technology and communication committee is in a committee that I believe we should establish.
There's not one that we have?
No. Um, this.
And the function of that committee as you see it?
Um, so a- again, this is something I I think I could work with Greg and put together a a, you know, a well defined uh document on what exactly their role would be, but essentially this would be to establish best practices um for the technology within the town um and communication. So again, I think this is would be a uh committee that could help establish those methods for recording and distributing uh in accordance with the bylaws.
Would this be the committee that would also provide support and so forth to the, for the cable expansion? Because there is a cable committee, right?
I think that would be a bit different, yeah. Uh, the cable commish- committee is would would.
They're the ones who would negotiate the contract with the cable.
Right, they would maintain their their existing duties, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see any reason to take and change that. This would be more for, um, you know, if if we have questions on, um, say.
Website?
Che- website, uh, changeable message boards, it's something we could ask them to look into, um, to better establish procedures for that. Um, anything involving the town communicating with the public essentially is what I'm kind of looking for and the technology involved in doing that.
Ask you to include in that the town sign.
Town sign?
Uh, the electronic sign that um there was a discussion.
Yeah, that's the changeable message signs, yeah.
Okay, and the problem was that obviously there's a there's a huge issue of concern about what would it look like? And if it's, you know, any kind of an electronic sign, there's a whole bunch of people, don't put it near the, you know, near the common.
Yep.
And then they then they try to think of what are the places you could put it and putting it down in by wholesome foods is been a suggestion, but that's a bad intersection as it is. And then having people.
And it's state property as well.
State property. We probably could get the state property. That's not a biggie.
Maybe.
Well, it's good.
Bastiaty can be um.
Yeah, well, and well, I'll tell you, the police are not thrilled about that, because I guess it's near misses down there a lot.
There is, there there is definitely some sight distance challenges coming out of Valley Road at that intersection.
There is, there is.
I, which, you know, might require longer term fixes, but something that should, you know.
Yeah, but I mean, I I just give you a group, one more thing to do. Okay.
I think there's there's a lot of things, I think we should, um, if if we go ahead and establish this, uh, I think we should really focus um, establish amongst ourselves kind of a priority list, because I think there are a lot of technology and communication issues in the town. And maybe, uh, you know, start with some of our higher priority items, but that's something I think we would want to work out um if we put together. So I I think I'm mostly uh trying to gauge if there is interest from the rest of the select board for us to move forward with putting together um effectively a a charter for this.
I I I I think it's a a great idea. The only concern that I have is we have a lot of boards and committees now we can barely get people to serve on.
Yeah.
I I would just hope we could get the right people interested in this and committed to it. So that's the challenge. Um, in a small community, there's the same people to, you know, eighty percent of the work is done by twenty percent of the people.
Yeah.
And it's kind of commonplace.
If I may, I'd like to comment on the sign, which is quite timely, is that I I kind of prepared some wording, but I wanted to make it more gentle. We have, I believe that this town has been treated like the uh long lost relative when it comes to notifying the citizens by others that we support that there's a very important meeting coming up tomorrow in a week or two or three, whatever. Now, we support the school portion. I have been by the school sign regularly. I see nothing about important town meeting tomorrow. And I looked on both sides and I did this several times.
I'll tell you why that is.
And, but we give them money every year. They should give us the respect.
Listen, if if you were to use, okay, the town, okay, put on there what is considered a campaign thing. I would be, as a superintendent, called upon the carpet by the campaign finance crowd to say that I use public funds to advertise another political me- meeting that is none of my business, none of my thing. I can't even put on there that there's a town, important town meeting. If there was a big school item on it, I can't even do that on those signs.
Okay, how about the senior center? Okay, if that's.
Can't do it.
If that's a specific, that's understandable.
I think you can do what you want on the senior center.
However, at the senior center, we see, we see nothing and we support the senior center. We uh we go to a meeting at the s- the school, the middle school.
For the middle school area.
And it's hot oftentimes. And everybody who calls me on the phone and writes me and says, I hate coming there because there's no air conditioning. The the fidelity of the sound sucks. We can't wait to get out of there. Don't we give money to the school on a regular basis? And can't we use their.
Listen, anytime they have asked, okay, the town has said, can we meet in the cafeteria? That's the only air conditioned spot is in the cafeteria, which doesn't, it's not great for acoustics, but we've been there several times. During the during the um, you know, COVID, where did you come to the school?
Yes.
Did anybody say to you, you can't come to the school? No, never.
So can we can we not make that as the new place to go? And I don't know what the auditorium, whether it's air conditioning, whether it's not, whether it's convenient, whether it's.
Oh, there there is no air conditioning at all in the auditorium. You don't want to go there.
Ruggles Lane or the high school right now?
He wants to go to the high school because there are some air conditioning spots there for large rooms.
Because I know, I've been to this meeting for forty years. Wow, I guess I must be old. But.
I'm not going to say anything.
And I, it's okay. And I see people, I see people standing like this, sitting like this.
Well, it's hot.
And it's hot. Now, right now it's perfect, but sometimes it isn't, so we need.
We're kind of off the subject, but.
Okay, but anyway, like, everybody would like to see a more comfortable place for us to make town decisions.
That you talk to the moderator. The moderator can make an overture to the schools, because you're meeting in the schools already. Say, not that school, but that school.
I will. And I'm sure the moderator is listening tonight.
I'm sure he is.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, um.
Yeah, uh, so then.
Go ahead.
Um, then the the last item I had um was just a discussion on inactive boards and committees.
Yeah, there's a lot of them listed.
Yeah, um, so I know, uh, Sandy, you've been working through the annual report. Uh, we were discussing a bit, um, well, this actually started as a technology communication issue, uh, because there was um a committee on the website that listed as hadn't having met in over a year, actually several years. And uh it turned out they had been reorganized under a different committee. Um, so that was um an issue of updating the website and establishing how to update that. Uh, but it also brought up that there are other boards and committees that have been inactive, at least since COVID, since since before COVID. Um, I think.
Once we get a list, it'll be interesting to.
Right. Um, I think, you know, if we do have a directive system in place, that might be a good place to organize and establish which ones are currently in existence. Um, you know, and filter through, make sure that all of the committee, boards and committees that aren't established by, um, you know, um, inactive the state or by bylaws, any that are just at the, you know, will of the select board have an appropriate definition um, established for them that we can, we should review those. Honestly, in in my opinion, I think it would be ideal for us as a select board to have a different board and committee meet with us at different meetings, so we meet with each one at least once a year to establish what they're doing.
What I would really say is that, in other words, is others, us saying, hey, come and meet with us. I would say we would ask them to invite us to their meeting. It's a little bit, you know, um, in their face for us to say, hey, selectmen want to have a meeting with you, whereas probably if we said, tika, we come to your meeting, it would be a different perspective, so to speak.
Either way is fine. I just think it would be, you know, I think it's something that we need to be at least understanding, you know, what is this board and committee doing? Is it still, you know? And, you know, if they're not still following what they were set to do, do we need to change what we're expecting of them? Because what they're doing is appropriate, or do we need to ask them to change what they're doing to better meet the needs of the town? Um, so I think we need to at least have a slightly more active role in understanding which boards are active, which ones should be active and trying to, you know.
And we probably should be more careful when we organize a committee, that we call it an ad hoc committee. If our expectation is, once they're done with their task, it's done.
So I I I would recommend that we um go through what Sandy is is putting together and determine, you know, um, the ones that might need to to have more assistance sooner. Um, you know, open space, for example, they they completed what they were originally given and we haven't provided them with any further instruction. I think, you know, um, the youth, uh, I believe it's called the youth committee, hasn't met in a long time. You know, we have the whole youth center upstairs, so I think, you know, establishing which ones, you know, um, need to be addressed sooner just for the sake of helping them move forward with their their intended goals and and uh mission, so to speak, would be a good uh project for us to move forward with. Uh, something I can certainly keep working on with Sandy.
Yeah, once we get a list and.
Start determining which ones, you know, to address sooner than later. And, you know, if we do have a directive system, essentially, we could put forward a directive confirming the existence of the ones that we need to.
Did you, uh, are you seeking um a motion on any of these specifically or?
No, these are more more just to um have discussion on these topics, make sure.
Would you like them on the agenda on every other meeting for once a month? We would just have a little update?
I I think that would be a good option, yeah, yeah. Um, I I'd certainly like to, you know, have some of these, have something written out for some of these to move forward with potentially approving. But uh for the time being, I just wanted to bring these up as, you know, and make sure that these are targets that the rest of the select board uh feels are appropriate targets to have moving forward.
I mean, we've got so many things to do.
Yes, we do.
Um, uh, I think it's important to to keep these on our plate, but to understand that they would probably not be as important as making sure we get that position filled.
These are are a bit more long term.
And we and we get the appointment of, you know, the job description, so to speak, very specific and so forth. Okay, thank you, John, for that, always following up on things and thank you for the work you're continuing to do with the master plan. You guys have done good work.
Thank you.
Good work. Um, I believe F is the individual was unable to attend because of his ill.
Said he would, I I did speak with him and he said that he would like to come in next week.
Well, on on May first, is that May first?
Yes, May first.
Okay, May first, we are leaving next week. So I know it's on May first. I didn't know it was so bad. Um, that sounds great. I I am a little concerned about the fact proposed zoning change is coming to us and not to the z- to the planning board.
He wants to come to meet with you because of what he perceives as a unique aspect of his zoning proposal.
Oh, okay.
And it it involves uh multifamily housing and he feels as though it's important for the board to have some input into that.
Okay. Well, I I I don't know if we should, if we if we agenda it, perhaps we should invite zoning board members. I really, uh, because I I the, I think there's a lot of issues about, you know, us going in and stomping around on somebody else's turf when it comes to to the planning board, so I would, I'd like to.
Agree with that.
Yeah, I'd 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 like to invite them. I I mean, hopefully that they would be amenable to to coming.
Do you know if this is an item that's already been brought to the planning board?
He, my recollection according to what he said is yes.
Okay.
So that says to me, they weren't amenable or acceptable and felt that they could come on down.
Better there, I, there could be any number of reasons. I don't want to speculate on what happened next.
But I don't want to, you know, indicate this, because this is really not our thing.
Zoning can get pretty sensitive.
Well, well, the thing of it is, we don't really have the right to take, to to do some of the things that the zoning board can or, you know, the zoning board of appeals or whatever, whatever, whatever he's asking. Uh, he's talking about multifamily housing. That is in in certainly the planning board's business.
Uh, yeah, I I don't know that there's anything wrong with hearing him out. I just don't know that we could offer anything as far as guidance or approvals or even personal opinions on it without overstepping.
Yeah, so he'll be here on on May first.
Yes.
Okay, um, appointments, we have a planning board, a full time member, Karen Keegan, has been recommended by the planning board membership to fill um that position that has been vacated. I can't remember the woman who resigned. Yeah.
At least Muskray.
Yeah, Muskray, that we had accepted.
So I just wanted to verify on this.
I'm not sure whether the wording is correct. I was under the impression that she was an alternate. And not, I'm not a full time, because there are.
Is that correct?
She was an alternate.
And now she's a full time?
So they're recommending her.
They're recommending that she be made full time.
Oh, okay, I re- because at the last meeting, it was, we had Floyd and there was Matt Irvin. There's a certain number of people allowed on the committee. I don't know if they had an associate or not.
Yeah, but this is their written recommendation to us.
Oh, there is, okay. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that 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 prospect could occur.
Yeah, so she was an associate and now she's going to be moved to a full time at their recommendation. Could I have a motion?
Uh, before we get into that, I just wanted to check on the advertisement of these positions. I know we had, I had mentioned advertising these. I was cur- wanted to know what uh steps were taken, if any, towards that.
I don't, I don't know on this one, what would have happened.
That one, the planning board was not, the one for conservation. Um, I got a call today, any um applications that come in for conservation, to send to them so they can review and make the recommendation back to the board.
So did we advertise these positions as open?
There was one I got the other day for conservation.
Now, do we advertise the planning board?
What did we put out, though, is the question?
I'm sorry?
Did did we put something out to advertise that there was an opening?
Not that I'm aware of.
You mean for the planning board?
For either?
Conservation, I'm talking conservation, not the board.
Okay.
Okay, I would say.
Was there for either of them?
They have an associate member and probably past practice has been that they, an associate becomes a full time member.
Yeah, so that was an advertised.
So we, that's another thing, you know, for us, we said we wanted them all advertised, but we just said it. And do they really understand that we may, and and part of me says, if I were on the planning board and the selectman said, she's been your associate, well, we want you to advertise it anyway. I mean, I mean, I just want to make sure when we talk with, when we, when we, when we decide to do some of these things, we talk with those people who are working very hard as planning board members and whatever, and not have this idea that for some reason, the select board has just taken over. I think it is important for us to say, you know, we should be advertising these, and maybe we say, we agree that an associate could be a full time. You could make that recommendation.
I'm I'm certainly open to to receiving recommendations from the boards. My my issue, of course, as I've mentioned before, is boards appointing to themselves. I I don't think there's a place for that in in town issues at all. I don't think, you know, even with um, you know, with master plan steering committee, you know, I chose to, you know, not vote in approving more members for that. You know, I I mean, you can look at examples, you know, um, in different states right now where people are being tossed out of their state legislatures and, you know. and, you know, the people are choosing to put them back in, it's not up to that legislature to, you know, appoint new people to them. I think it's a really important principle that boards and committees are not appointing to themselves. I think it would be wildly inappropriate for the select board, you know, if one of us resigned for us to select someone else to be on our board. I think that would go to special town election for a reason. So I just personally would prefer it to be advertised, I, I've put a very high value, a very high value in the recommendation. Um, but I don't feel comfortable making an appointment without it being advertised first.
So what, so what we, what we would have to do then is we would have to, in writing, and so very specific, so people know they're supposed to do that, because past practice has been like forever, I would suspect. If they have an associate on there, they just say, okay, that's why we have associates, so they'll become the full-time. If we don't agree with that part, practice, we have to, in writing, say to them, we don't agree with that practice, please do X, Y, and Z. Or please inform.
And, and that's what we've been, I've been saying for a year now.
But when you're advertising, you're just saying, oh, the position of conservation, what does that involve? What do they do, what time do they leave, when do they leave, that should all be on in your advertising.
Right. So we, you know, we might need to get that information from them first.
Right.
And, you know, and I don't think there's anything wrong with getting that information to, to properly advertise these positions.
So is this, is, so is the conservation person, Richard, is he been, is, was he a person who applied?
Uh, yes.
He made application, he was the only applicant that we received.
There is one other person.
For conservation.
One other person applied?
It was just, uh, this, this, uh, one that we took out tonight, uh, for conservation.
Richard.
Yeah.
He was the only one that applied that I got.
Someone, someone else actually asked that this item, this number two B table.
That was, that was from the Conservation Committee.
Okay, so, so, so we are, we're going to take no action on this?
Right.
And we're going to advertise, and we're going to ask the planning board to advertise the position? And obviously, if Karen wants to be.
So they advertise, not us.
Well, I don't know, that's.
That's, that is, right, that's a great question.
I think we should advertise.
Yeah.
But I need that information to advertise.
Right, so I, I believe the appropriate thing would be for you to get that information from them, advertise and they know that, make it clear to them, if they don't give you that information, it's just going to delay our appointment of someone until you get that information from them, so that we can advertise, I think, you know, an appropriate amount of time would be at least for two weeks.
And we got to make sure it's in here.
Yeah, and, and then we'll make sure that's clear in this part, yes.
For, for the, for the next guy coming in there.
And again, I put a very high, high value in their recommendation, but I just want to make sure that, you know, there is an opportunity to hear from anyone who's interested. And I certainly welcome either the commission, the conservation commission or the planning board to give their input on everyone who applies. I certainly welcome that, but I just want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to put in. And realistically, I, I think it's, you know, could be more likely that someone who sees that opening might be, uh, interested if, if we do go with their recommendation to then apply for the associate position. That opens up if we do move Karen from the associate position to the full-time position. But I think it's, it's good to get that information out there and, you know, as was said earlier, there's not a lot of people who want to take these boards and commissions, but I think there's also a lot of people who don't know about their openings.
So, so what are we doing on planning board then?
Well, we're not, we're not going to take any action on any of them, but I think that we have to put in writing, okay, a paragraph to all boards and say, please adhere to the following practice. Whenever you have an opening, please make certain that it is advertised through, okay, the town administrator's office and that candidates who make application will go to your board for first review.
Why is this happening now, it's like it's a new thing, what have we done in the past?
Well, because, uh, just.
In the past, it's been, yeah, whoever the board or committee recommends has been.
And I'm guessing what happens is.
A word of mouth.
A word of mouth, yeah, it's.
So this would be a much more formalized process, we just have to let them know that they all have to do it.
Right, and this is something that we've kind of been bringing up over the last year, last, in fact, last year when there were renewals for a lot of positions, we put out that those positions would be renewing and I know that was, you know, an issue for some people, but where that hadn't been done before, but I think it was appropriate because it, it showed the town what positions there were and actually filled a lot of positions that were vacant. Um, I think at least a couple on the two-fiftieth committee had just been empty positions that were filled because of that, with people who wanted to get active and wanted to get involved, but didn't know the people. You know, you shouldn't have to know someone's personally to know what openings there are.
Usually you have to run into them somewhere and say, would you please, please be on the board, we get an opening.
So I, I, I think it's good to just make it clear and visible to everyone, to know that these positions do come up. This is what you should be looking for and you might not get it this time, but it's something to, you know, if you want to get involved, it's something to keep on your radar and to look for as more positions open up.
Basically, what you're saying, what's, what has happened in the past doesn't work, is what you're saying.
Well, it works, but it doesn't open up the opportunities to more people.
It works to. But what's been done in the past is what gets one person filling multiple roles on different boards because no one else knows about it to step up for it and puts more on people that then, you know, would be ideal.
No, I understand all that, I, I got all that, I, I get that, I'm just.
I mean, even just from this example, the person who resigned resigned from both planning board and conservation commission.
It just seems like there's an awful, big lack of interest in, in these type of boards now, I just want to hear.
I don't, I don't know that there's a lack of interest, just a lack of information and understanding. And I mean, I could be, I could be proved wrong, I could absolutely be proved wrong, but I want to at least give the community the opportunity to know about it.
And I think it's really important, though, to, to.
Exposure.
Yeah.
Well, not only that, but to impress upon the planning board or the conservation or whomever, okay, board health, whatever, that we are in no way casting aspersions on their work.
Right.
Because I'm sorry, you, you have to understand, people, you know, they've volunteered their time, they're spending all this time and then all of a sudden, this board thinks that, what we're trying to say is, no, we're trying to help make a more robust, you know, group of people who would like to serve in various positions, this in no way reflects negatively on them. Because I will tell you, depending on how this message is delivered, it's pretty negative.
Well, I, I mean, this is something that, you know, over the last year, we've said to multiple boards with different appointments, this is everyone, even, you know, I, I'm on the master plan steering committee, I believe the same thing even for the board I sit on there.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not, I'm not disputing it. All I'm saying is, remember, we have a message that we want to, you know, put forward, we have to make sure that the message is something that people understand, it's not an assault on their work or their character.
No, they, they certainly.
Because people are sensitive, you have to understand that.
I, I think they're, I, I think they're understanding enough. I don't think that the planning board or conservation commission are that sensitive. I think the people on there will understand, I, they're adults, just like everyone else here. I, I believe they will, you know.
John, you are absolutely right to assume the best of people.
All right.
So all I'm going to say, but I, you know, and knowing, knowing people.
It's not about what the boards have done or not done, it's about including the community.
I, I, I understand that, you're abs, as you, you're, you know, the reason you want to do this is absolutely appropriate. I just know we have to deliver the message in a way that doesn't have people feeling that we in some ways feel that they are less than honest, less than honorable, and they haven't done a good job in the past. So we just have to make.
I, I agree, there's, there's a proper way to, to share the message. I don't think we need to tiptoe around people's feelings because we're all adults here, I think, and it's not about.
So you're going to deliver it, right?
I'll deliver, I'll deliver, I think I'm better at delivering the message.
Well, I'm just, I'm not going to discredit anyone on any of these boards or committees by saying that they need their feelings tiptoed around. I think we're all able to understand where this is coming from.
No, no, I. Well, yeah, you see. I understand what you're saying, not tiptoeing around this thing, but you have to.
I'm just saying, if, if someone was saying that I was too sensitive to understand this, I'd, I'd be more insulted by that than by, by this personally.
Well, yeah, but, having, having worked with people a long time and worked with some of the people that, you know, we're delivering this message to and how hard they've worked and what they've, you know, accomplished for the community and so forth.
Oh, they've done great work for the community, no one's saying anything about that, you just want to make sure the community is involved.
But I don't want them to, okay, interpret this, okay, as you haven't done a very good job.
Right, that's not what we're trying to say at all.
Well, okay, I know that, but you have, we have to make sure that that, we lead with that.
Right, and, and I completely understand that.
Because people are sensitive and I agree with you that maybe we don't want to tolerate that sensitivity, but you know what?
No, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't tolerate sensitivities that are there, I just want to respect people. You know, I just, I don't want to demean people by saying they're too sensitive to, to understand something.
Well, I'm not saying they're too sensitive, I'm just saying that in order to, to deliver the message and to have people understand that we very much appreciate the work and the time and the effort they have put in and the extra times that they have probably saw somebody in the hall and say, come on, will you do it, please do it, nobody will do it, would you please do it? So I just want to make sure we deliver the message properly, so I will help you deliver the message.
Yep, that would be great.
Can we just ask them if it was something they were interested in?
Yeah, so what, so what we'd like to do is, is to make sure that we advertise all the positions and give everybody an open opportunity to participate in the work of the community. And I will deliver the message. Because I know most of them personally, so I will do that. Okay.
And you can deliver my appreciation for the work they've done and that would be great.
I will, John, I will. Trust me, there's fifteen of them watching tonight and we'll get a call who'll say, I can't believe you said that, Maureen, so, anyway. Anyway, um, I think we're at old business at this point, we'll take no action on the appointments and I will deliver that message, okay? Why we've took no, why we have not taken action and you will make sure we get these things advertised. And I, I don't know if there's a process that you use at every time, the same way?
I have no idea because I've never done it, so it's been a TA.
Okay, well, we'll talk with Greg about it too.
I, I will.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
New, new TA, new process.
Yeah, new TA, we can blame him.
Well. Exactly.
That's what I'll say.
No, blame me, I have my day.
It's crazy idea.
Okay.
You know, then I would be.
From the east.
Okay, so I, I think the, you know, the inactive boards and so forth, I, I think that you'll be working on to them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can work with you on that more.
Okay, old business, do, does anyone have any issues of concern under old business? Even our fourth member doesn't have anything under old business.
Well, I probably do, but.
All right.
Fire station?
But let me tell you.
Oh, God, I'd love to talk about you.
Let me tell you, we had to do such a great job. Now the board seems to be more open and responsive and not as dictatorial sometimes as in the past. And it's, it's a, it's a, it's a welcoming pleasure.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, um, I'm hearing nothing, make a motion to adjourn, non-debatable, those in favor?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm not going to adjourn.